Good morning. I'll call to order the September 8th regular meeting of the Haywood County Board of Commissioners, and our first order of business will be our Pledge of Allegiance, and then after that, I'll ask our pastor and chaplain Josh Frazier to come forward and give our invocation. So if everyone will please stand for the pledge.
Let us pray. Father God in heaven, we just thank you for another beautiful day to be able to come and to be able to serve in various areas that you have gifted each one of us. God, we pray that today we would be able to see, God, all the truth, Lord, that's out there, and be able to just make wise and good decisions based off of that. We all want the same thing. We all want good for each other. We all want good for ourselves. And we just pray that you would give us guidance in how to make those decisions and wisdom. I was reminded over the weekend about what truth is, and we need to hold so dearly to that in today's times. There's so much division and everything throughout not only our county, but our state and our United States. We just pray that you would just help us, just unite us back together as people loving and caring for one another. And it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Josh. Okay. Our next order of business is the call for public hearing. In advance of applying for the community block grants, development block grants, a call for public hearing is necessary. This public hearing is the initial step so that Haywood County can apply for CDVG funds to address both health and economic impacts related to COVID-19. So at this time, I'll call for public hearing to be held on September 21st, 2020 at 5:30 PM in the historic courtroom of the historic Haywood County courthouse located at 215 North Main Street, Waynesville, North Carolina regarding submittal of grant applications to the North Carolina Department of Commerce for North Carolina Community Development Block Grants. And we have our program administrator David Francis here to describe that. Good morning Dave.
Good morning Commissioners. Hope everybody had an enjoyable and beautiful weekend here. Nice holiday to have. Just wanted to touch base about the community block development grants. There are, these are start with federal funds from the Department of Commerce, go to HUD, and then go to our North Carolina Department of Commerce to be administered to the towns and counties locally. And there's a different host of different community block grants that are administered from a building reuse grants, public infrastructure grants, demolition grants, disaster recovery grants, which can include any COVID-19 grants, and also community housing grants. So this is a general community block development grant public hearing. All of those, so if citizens want to come and talk about any of these particular aspects of the community block development grant that they would like the county see, do, or benefit more from, that's what this public hearing is for, okay? There might be another public hearing later to talk about a very specific part of one of these grants. Recently, the Department of Commerce released funding in the amount of $27 million for some COVID relief that we will, if we're trying to figure out what is the best use of those funds, and we would have to have another public hearing concerning the use of those funds. So this is just the general, this is required anytime you receive CDVG grant funds, you have to have the general one, and then you have to have a specific one for the received funds. So this will just be the general one right now. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you David. Okay, we need to vote on this, so I'll entertain a motion for the public hearing on September 21st, 2020 at 5:30 in the court in this room regarding the submittal of grant applications to the North Carolina Department of Commerce for North Carolina Community Development Block Grants.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicating saying aye. Okay, unanimous. Okay, our next order of business is the public comment session. Would anyone like, do we have anyone signed up Tracy? Okay, would anyone like to address the board this morning? Okay, hearing no one, I'll close the public comment session. Okay, the next order of business is their constituent concerns. And I had, isn't Dr., I mean, I had asked during constituent concerns, I'd asked Patrick and Dr. Jabin, Patrick Johnson and Dr. Jabin to kind of let us know kind of where we're at with this right now. Also want to let Mr. Johnson know that he's going to be retiring, and we appreciate all the good work that you've done Patrick during this time. I'm sure that it couldn't just be a normal time for your last few months, but anyway, you've definitely gotten us through this in really good shape. We appreciate you.
Thank you. I was meeting with Tammy Quinn, our nursing director, and Beth Parks, one of our nurses who has been helping us out since Maple Leaf has closed. And Tammy mentioned to me that case number 501 has, and a couple, and their family members have been particularly impacted by COVID. And she said it was her spouse, 246, was in Mission Hospital, and the mother of 246 was also just released from Mission, had been on a ventilator and was in a rehab facility. And then Beth said, well, you know, 246 was infected by, sorry that we just use numbers, but case 229, who was a worker in their home, and 246 had commented that two, that that, she had come into the home without a mask. And so then we kind of stopped and looked back at our cases, and then we noticed that it just takes one. And this all started with one employee who contracted COVID. He was infected at his workplace. And I will say from the start, it was not Silver Bluff. They've had enough problems there. But this gentleman was not, was infected at his workplace and came home, and his daughter, who lives in his home, was infected. She then transmitted it to her teenage friend who worked in the home of a woman in her 60s who has coexisting conditions. She ended up, when she started to get a little bit sick, her son came over to visit her. She ended up getting sicker. She ended up going to Mission. She was on a ventilator. Her son started to get sick. He ended up going to Mission. Then his wife started to get sick. She ended up being a case also. So what we're saying, what we wanted people to know, just takes one case to create a grand total of five other cases. And what we want to also keep in mind is cases five and six don't even know who case number one is. So, and also, even if case number one was mildly ill, case number four and five ended up in Mission Hospital, and four is still in a rehab facility right now. I really think that's all I wanted to share. Dr. Jabin has some other things he wanted to share.
Good morning.
Morning.
Everybody's smiling. That's good. The other thing that I thought we wanted to share with everybody is just where things have been, where things are, and hopefully where things are going. This is the slide of the cumulative cases in the United States since the onset of COVID. And as you can see, there was a ramp up early. There was a decrease to a plateau that was higher. Then there was another ramp up even higher, down to what now looks like another plateau, which is yet higher than the previous plateaus. And this is a curve that is a little concerning because we don't know where that's going. It would suggest that there will be another spike, and it will go even higher than what we have experienced to date across the country. And of course, what we've seen across the country are rolling waves in different places that account for what we're seeing. Is the, oh, it's right here. Sorry. These are the similar curves for two counties adjacent to us, Graham County and Cherokee County. And I want to start this by saying that since we were last here, there has been a gradual and marked decline in new cases all across western North Carolina. The state itself is following the curve of what we just saw with the U.S. and looks to have plateaued and may now be increasing somewhat. So similar shape of curve. If you look at western North Carolina, we have amongst the counties some of the lowest rates in the state right now. But I wanted to share the experience of Graham County and Cherokee County, and just for a moment, look at the shape of those curves. Flat, a spike, a recovery, close to baseline, and then another big spike. I'll tell you that in both of those counties, whereas we're seeing roughly around five new cases a day average, they were down to that rate. Those spikes up have got them about 35 cases a day, which by the White House Task Force criteria, or the global health, Harvard Global Health Initiative criteria, are well into red zone. So just keep those curves in mind. This is Haywood County. And you can see before that spike, we were sort of ambling along. Then we have this spike in July, August, and a precipitous drop down to where we are. If you look at the right-hand part of that curve, you'll see that it's flat. And so we're not sure if this is a new plateau for us. We don't know if this is our new situation. What we do know is that precipitous drop, the rise of the drop, some of which was related to Silver Bluff, but I will tell you, maybe half of it was not related to Silver Bluff. If you look at that drop, we're down to a plateau that is above the plateau where we were before that spike. So the question is, where are we headed, given these experiences around us? And what I would say is, we've learned some things along the way. And I think one of the things that we've learned is that the actions that people take do matter and make a difference. I would like to believe that in Haywood County, enough of us have taken heart to those actions, that it has resulted in what you're seeing in this curve. My only concern is that I would like to see us down to a plateau level where we were before that spike. What we now know is that there are enough people in Haywood County that are paying attention to their hygiene, paying attention to their distancing, paying attention to wearing face coverings, that we've been able to see what we see. The question is, is that enough going forward? So I would like to ask people to pause, if you will, examine what it is you want. If you want the economy and businesses to be fully open, if you want schools to be open and to be able to remain open, if you want to live less under the shadow of this virus, then we know what this takes. Because people in our community are showing us the path. You know, early on, we talked about the hammer and the dance, if you remember that. The hammer was the lockdown phase where we had to get control of things. The dance was to follow that, in which we were trying to figure out how to live with this virus. And I think what we now know is the dance has two steps. Number one, avoid getting infected. What this means is act and behave in a way that does not make you a close contact. What's a close contact? Close contact is defined as within six feet for more than 15 minutes without a face covering. Is that a guarantee? No, but it's your best chance not to get infected. And if we avoid crowds, which we know are the highest risk situations, especially if indoors, and especially where others are not doing these things, then we can avoid getting infected. That's step one. Dance step two is avoid giving it to others. If you get sick, isolate. If you are, find yourself in a situation where you are in close contact, quarantine. Be considerate of your family and your neighbors and this community and what we have achieved so far in this community. Don't give the virus a place another person to jump to. So the question going forward is, where are we going to be? Are we going to stay plateaued and continue to go down, which gives us our best chance to live our lives not underneath this virus as much? Or are we going to have an experience like our neighbors in Graham and Cherokee County, or certainly how North Carolina appears to be going, or certainly how the country appears to be going? So these are the things that we wanted to share this morning with the community. Thank everybody for being here. We thank you for letting us come update you. And if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
Is anybody having questions for Dr. Jabin?
I'm just curious, why are we doing the random testing that's coming up? Is that something that's expected to be done, or do you see something? The random testing that's fixing to happen, I believe one of them was last week, and then you've got them coming up, three more episodes?
So there's random testing being done by Blue Ridge Health. The state, Patrick, correct me if I'm wrong, but the state has funded through some CARES Act stuff, the ability to test randomly. That was not really necessarily from the, we didn't really drive that from the Health Department, but that is coming from the state and making that available to people. So that's where that came from.
Well, I remember you saying that just because you were tested today, if you're not symptomatic and you don't have it, that's not going to tell you two days from now. So that's why I was wondering.
Yeah. And that is the problem with random testing of asymptomatic people. It's just a snapshot in time of the day that you were tested. There is a thought around the country that that perhaps would help us identify some people who are in their pre-symptomatic phase. So again, as everybody, I'm sure, I hope those by now, people can be infected without symptoms. They are contagious for a couple of days before their symptoms actually begin. So there's no way to know. This, of course, is why you want to avoid being in close contact with anyone, because you don't know who's in their pre-symptomatic phase. And there have been various thoughts about how much of this spread is based on that. So the thought is, even doing the random testing of asymptomatic folks, you're going to pick up some of those people in their pre-symptomatic, more than you would otherwise. The yield is probably pretty low, to be honest with you, Mark. And that's why there's some people who have not really been in favor of random testing. But as we test more, if we can pick up more of these pre-symptomatic folks, any of those, then that's better than not picking them up at all. So that's where that's coming from. I don't know if you heard that, but Patrick said that two of the 50 that were tested in that first round, two ended up being positive, so positive in that pre-symptomatic phase. So if we could pick up any of that, that would be helpful. I think that's where the thought's coming from.
But if they are not showing any symptoms, you don't quarantine them for being tested?
Right.
Say it again?
You're not quarantining these people for being tested, so whoever those two were continued about their lives until the test came back?
That's correct. And that's another problem with testing asymptomatic folks. In the best of all worlds, if you're going to get tested, you're going to quarantine until your results come back. But when it comes to people who are asymptomatic randomly in the population, are we going to ask those 50 people to quarantine? And that's, that's the, that's the challenge with that. So you're right, those people were out and about until their results came back. Yep. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you all for coming this morning. Okay, any other constituent concern I had was the 2020 census update. And we have the U.S. Census Bureau Specialist Chuck McGowan this morning. Welcome Chuck.
Good morning Commissioners, good morning ladies and gentlemen. My name is Chuck McGowan. I work for the United States Bureau specifically in western North Carolina. This morning, I'm going to give everyone a quick update on where Haywood County is at, as well as some of the initiatives in place over kind of the final push of the census here for the next few weeks that's going to help us get where we want to be. So first of all, I'd like to let you know specifically how Haywood County is doing in relation to some of the other checkpoints we have. So you can see the United States, what these numbers represent are folks who self-responded. So they either got something in the mail, or got something left on their door, or didn't, but still went online or called on the phone to self-respond to the census. The United States is at 65.3%. North Carolina, a little bit lower than that, at 61.2%, which quite honestly ranks us pretty low amongst the 50 states, right around 37. And then Haywood County comes in at 55.2%. So below North Carolina's rate, but, but I think the good thing, the good takeaway is if you see that in 2010, the self-response rate for Haywood County was 53.1%. So you've already surpassed that by 2%. So that's actually pretty good. And we'll talk about some of the things that are going on in western North Carolina that make it a little bit more difficult, and why most of our counties out here are ranked in the bottom 50% of North Carolina. We have some, some of your incorporated towns that we actually track here in Haywood. Canton is at 63.5%, already surpassed their 2010 goal. Clyde, 57.4%, also surpassed. Waynesville, 59.7%. So all those towns are doing pretty well. Maggie Valley already surpassed, but a little bit lower at 31%. And then you can see some of the counties in North Carolina that we have to reference. The number one county right now, Union County, obviously what they have going on there, their demographics are a lot different than North Carolina, but they're over 70. But some of the counties directly surrounding y'all, we have Buncombe at 61.6%, Madison at 53.2%, and then Jackson has a lot of challenges because of PO boxes. So we see them a lot lower there at 34.7%. Overall, I would say Haywood County doing pretty well. Each county is broken up into tracks as well. So here, you can kind of take a look at Haywood County, and certainly the folks in this room know Haywood much better than I do. I live in Transylvania County. So you can look at some of these tracks that I've chosen as your lowest response tracks, and probably figure out what's going on there. But they're kind of around the peripheries. You know, you've got the lower, the southeast track there, 9213, still over 50%, which is good. I think that happened last week. But those far left tracks there, I think probably represent Maggie Valley. And if I had to guess, a lot of those tracks, there's a lot of second homes that potentially are going to show up as vacant. And that's a big problem that we have here in western North Carolina. So even though those numbers are low, potentially in the 30 percentile, that's really 30% of the, of the houses that we have sent information to. So if a lot of those are vacant, it doesn't really paint a complete picture, if that makes sense to you. If there's some vacant homes there, there are really only half the homes that may be occupied. So that 35% in 9207, it could actually be 70%. The problem is, we won't know that until the census is complete, until we've sent enumerators to all those houses that didn't respond. And then those enumerators will come back and say, hey, there was no one there. We checked with a neighbor. They said no one lives there right now. And then that house will come back as vacant. But really, you know, these numbers are great. And we've been using these self-response numbers as kind of our score. But ultimately, if those houses are vacant, it means we're also not getting the numbers that they represent for your community. And, and we know that each person in the community represents anywhere from $1,600 to $1,800 to your county and federal funding. So there's some issues that we specifically deal with in western North Carolina. High number of second homes that ultimately will show up as vacant or unoccupied. And there may be other unoccupied homes that just aren't being lived in, but aren't necessarily second homes. We have a high number of renters out here as well. Many of the tracks, 30, 40, 50% renters. And renters tend to be our most challenging demographic for a lot of reasons. But some of it is, they just get a piece of mail that's not addressed to them specifically because we send mail to a physical address, not a person. And so when they see that physical address, they may think it's not for them. I've talked to many renters that thought that the owner was supposed to fill it out. But really, what we need to do is help get the word out to those renters that they need to fill it out for the place that they're living. Also broadband internet, especially during COVID. And COVID has impacted a lot of this, this, this stuff that we have going on. But ultimately, folks don't have broadband internet. And during COVID, that's been our primary means of advertising the census. There's folks that have never heard of the census that I still come across. And they're not, they're not young people who didn't fill it out in 2010. They're folks that just had no idea the census was going on. We may meet them at a post office where we have a table set up, or they haven't gotten anything in the mail. And so they didn't think they could respond. That's another big issue we see, is folks like, well, I haven't gotten anything yet. And, and those folks, if we don't somehow reach them before September 30th right now, then they're going to go uncounted in your community. And then a high number of PO boxes. There was only really one tract in Haywood, but we see a lot of PO boxes. And again, we don't send mail to a PO box, but what we did do is send an actual human being to each of those houses that are represented by a PO box. We put something on their door. But again, I talk to people all the time that say that they never got anything. And I think just the geography of western North Carolina, we have houses placed everywhere. It's, it's a lot of workload to try and get folks to all those houses. We think we did a good job, but ultimately, we know that there's houses that had to have been missed. Again, COVID-19 multiplied a lot of these issues. And I see in the tracks that we'll call underperforming, really just your lowest tracks, they all have some combination of those issues that we've seen. One thing I want to push, and I know Mr. Moorhead has spoken to folks about this, is the Dogwood Health Trust Grant. We, we've worked with them to get a grant to the tune of about $1.5 million in western North Carolina. And they're offering a bunch of different things. The first was a mini grant to each county that participated. And out of their 18 counties, 17 of them actually participated, as did Haywood. Mini grant to do anything that you wanted to do with. And then for each percentage point that the county increases is $1,000. And I think that they may have even upped that for the month of September, because we lost October at some point. $5,000, which Haywood has already gotten for surpassing your 2010 goal, that is a big deal. And then the big thing, the thing that I think will make the difference here over the last few weeks, is that they're offering any nonprofit, they're actually going to give them money for folks that they sign up. And it's a super easy process to get signed up. And I'll make sure that Mr. Moorhead has all the information if there's, if there's groups out there. But really, we need those nonprofits to go into places like food banks, you know, and their communities that we may not necessarily reach. And it could be the NAACP, it could be, you know, a local place that houses folks experiencing homelessness. They can get those people counted. Whereas if, if this face shows up to their door, or wherever that they're doing business, they may not want to deal with that because it's a trust fact. We need the local trusted voices and trusted faces in the forms of these nonprofits to get out there and try and help us get the count. And they're getting paid well. So it was $10. It's been updated to $20 through the rest of September as well. So that means a family of five. And I'm going to an event this afternoon that's at a food distribution. We're going to try and get cars to get their food, then come over to our census booth. We do a family of five, and that's going to be a $100 check that took five minutes to do back to that nonprofit. It's called the Sharing House. And if we could get nonprofits to take advantage of that, that to me, that boots on the ground is what's really going to make a difference in these last few weeks. The way ahead right now, the count ends on September 30th. I think there's probably a lot of rumors floating out there about October. I hear the same rumors, but as for right now, today, as I'm briefing you, the, the end date is September 30th, which means there's still time. Three weeks left. We can get a lot of folks counted. Over the last few weeks, Haywood has been in the top five in North Carolina out of all 100 counties for the count. And, and I think a lot of western North Carolina counties are. And I think it has to do with Dogwood, that we're getting a lot of, a lot of stuff from the nonprofits who are deploying out there to their communities. And again, Haywood County over the last four days, a 0.6% increase, which ranked you fifth in the state, which is a big deal. Most, most counties these days are getting a 0.1 increase like every other day. Again, enumeration began, that's our door knockers. We began that on August 11th. The Asheville Census Office is the second ranked out of seven in North Carolina right now for actually hitting homes and getting, we are just under 50% of the homes that we had left to do. Whereas last week, I was actually deployed to Greenville, to their area, because they're far behind. So that's good news for us. It means we've got a much better chance over the next few weeks of hitting every home. But again, it is an extremely daunting task. Social media, we've been killing that for many months now. Quite honestly, I think it's saturated. I think we need face to face, I think for three weeks, you know, every person in this room, the way you're going to get it done is when you're having a conversation with your family and friends, that you're actually asking if they've done the census, and not taking no for an answer, to the point where you're sitting down with them on the computer and getting it knocked out. Folks do not need a unique ID to complete the census. That's another thing we've seen. There's a button that says, I don't have a unique ID. You click that, plug it in, your address, and you're off and running. Five minutes later, you've been counted. And again, your family now is worth valuable dollars to your community for things like schools, roads, SNAP, WIC, Medicare, Medicaid. I promise you, everyone in this room, you use something that is affected by census dollars and that CARES Act, that money that came to every county for that, absolutely based on census numbers from 2010. So there's kind of that final thing is, whatever numbers you come up with, within Haywood, or every county, you're stuck with till 2030 for good or for bad. There's the information up on the screen of how you can do it. Go online. Please tell your friends and family. And again, don't take no for an answer. There is no good reason not to do the census. All it does is help your community. And we're also kind of a team as a state of North Carolina. We've got potentially up for grabs another congressional seat, which would make 14. The only way it's going to happen is if we get an accurate count. And barring any questions, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes my presentation.
Okay. What, what is the nonprofit that's, that you're going to be visiting today? Is it in Haywood County?
So it's actually, it's in Transylvania County. The nonprofit is the Sharing House, but it's actually my Rotary Club that has signed up with Dogwood. We're going to be manning the booth, and we're just going to give that money right back to the Sharing House. And I cold called a bunch of people last week, and in two hours, I made $320. It's going to go right back. So we're seeing Rotary Club sign up, and those are the groups that are struggling. So we're seeing Rotary Club sign up, and those are the groups that are struggling to find ways to do fundraisers these days. We're not doing bicycle races and things like that. So it's a great thing to do. But again, I'm only one guy working about twenty or twenty-five counties right now. We need folks in here to say, I'm going to do it for my county.
I know, Haywood Christian Ministry, they give out food every day, and that would probably be a good, I don't know, I'll try to contact them and let them know about this if they don't know. And probably Mountain Projects.
Yes, sir. In twenty-four hours, we could have them signed up. There is a umbrella organization in Robbinsville that's doing most of the work. And again, I'll make sure that Mr. Moorhead has that information. They could be tomorrow earning money for their nonprofit and helping the county.
Right, okay.
Were you able to secure enough field workers? I know one of your coworkers were here earlier. A few months ago, soliciting people to come work for y'all to come knock on doors. Were you able to get enough people?
So the answer is, we didn't get the number that we expected. We needed nineteen thousand. Asheville's area required the largest number in the entire region of Atlanta. And the reason is apparently historically, we're not able to keep people in work for the census, even at nineteen dollars an hour. But I think, right now, we're on track. Again, the Asheville area is the number two county in North Carolina, whereas counties like Greenville or Greenville and Durham, their areas are extremely low. And they're very rural communities as well. But quite honestly, I was in Carteret County last week doing what we call a blitz. And Carteret, which I've lived in, I don't think is a lot different, very touristy. You know, it's tough to find places with local foot traffic. We don't want to put up a booth out here on Main Street and start counting people from Florida. I want them to get counted, but quite honestly, in the short time we have left, we want to count Haywood and western North Carolina people. And it's tough to find the spot with that local traffic. So tough out there as well, but Asheville's area is doing well. So I think ultimately, the answer is going to be, we're going to do a pretty good job of getting folks counted. But no, sir, we did not meet the goal of nineteen thousand. And by the way, still hiring. The turnaround process for the background check is about forty-eight hours right now. And there's no telling that, we're not going to hear on the news today, that it's extended back to October thirty-first. There's a court case going on right now. I'm operating as if we're done here in twenty-two days, but it could still get extended. And if so, lots of time for folks to earn nineteen dollars an hour plus mileage. And again, it's going to be that local face that's out here that people are going to open the door for. They're not going to open it for this.
Good point. Well, and I think I might have said this last time, I was doing some genealogy research, and every ten years, I went back to, I was researching my family in eighteen hundreds, and every ten years, I could get a snapshot of what that family, the members of the family, how old they were, where they lived, the value of their home. There were several things that, it's really, and so, you know, if you sign up, you might, somebody might be looking you up in a hundred years or two hundred years and
Absolutely.
You know, exactly what, you know, what your progress was every ten years.
Yes, sir. And for the record, we don't release information for seventy-two years. So we're going to keep it confidential. We're all sworn for life. Your information is going to stay with you for seventy-two years, and then, just or somebody will be looking you up. But we're going to make sure your information is safe.
Good. Does anybody have any questions?
Just one last thing, maybe. You didn't mention it, but to complete this, you can go online or call the number that you have, is that correct?
That's correct. And to do this, generally, you're going to avoid the knock, is what we say. Otherwise, you should expect someone's going to come knock at your door. And for the commissioners, I know there's other commissioners that are answering questions like, hey, I filled it out, but I still got the knock. We do have an audit process. We may send folks to your house just to make sure, to verify a piece of information. We also do that when sometimes the address that is input is not exactly the same way we have it geocoded. Instead of Main Street, you put in Main S T. Someone may come to verify. And then, quite honestly, we're just, we're not perfect. It's all human input. There could be mistakes, which could be why you get another visit. But that's about five percent of the cases for ninety-five percent of you. If you go online and do that or call, then we will not come visit you.
Yeah, I think my wife's already gone online and put us in the, so, of course, you got, we got the letter in the mail, and then the form you fill out.
Yes, sir.
But she just went ahead and went online and did it then. So it was, it was easy, didn't take her long.
Absolutely, five minutes. And I'll be working with Mr. Moorhead hard for the next three weeks to make sure we did the best we can for Haywood.
All right, great. And I think Tracy was saying about some of the signs that they had been using for COVID, that in some of the states that she'd been to, that they advertise the census, you know, just as a short blip, when you're sitting at the lot at Lowe's, and it's, you know, it's like, oh, yeah, I need to do that, you know? It's good. It's good, that's a good way to reach people too. So we might think about doing that, if we're not already.
Greg actually had our sign deployed out by the Lowe's intersection over the weekend. I saw it.
I thought I saw it. I've been to so many places in North Carolina this past week, I was, I wasn't sure. So, okay, great, thanks, Greg. That was a great idea. Okay. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. All right, does anybody have any constituent concerns? Tommy, you want, if you have any?
No, I just had several emails concerning some of the CARES Act funding, and I think Mr. Moorhead answered a question for those folks. And I want to make comment about local hometown heroes. I noticed the local newspaper published some of the workers at Silver Bluff, and they recognize them as local hometown heroes. And they definitely are. They still are. And as they kind of were on the front lines of the COVID outbreak here in Haywood County, they lost several residents. And I know they developed relationships with their patients, and I know they, their heart was broken, as well as the family. And so they are hometown heroes, all of our frontline healthcare workers, EMS, Sheriff's Department. I do want to make mention of those, they are local hometown heroes. And just appreciate them and all the hard work they do. They literally put their life on the line every day to secure the health and well-being of Haywood County, and I appreciate that. Also, we'll make mention of Patrick Johnson. I know our chairman mentioned him earlier. He did notify us he was going to be seeking retirement. I appreciate his service to the county, and especially during the times he's had to face over the last several months. So appreciate Mr. Johnson and his service to the county. I also want to make one comment. I know our country's torn apart right now with several different tides pulling in different directions. Over the weekend, I talked to a friend of mine who's about eighty-one years old, and he had COVID nineteen and was in the COVID unit for five days at Mission Hospital. And he told me that it was the worst thing he'd ever experienced in his life, and he wished that no one would ever have to go through that. He had a heart problem. His cardiologist called him a few days after he got released to go home. And his cardiologist told him that he was surprised to hear his voice. He said that he saw his charts. He figured that he would not have the opportunity to talk to him again on this earth. He told me one thing that stuck with me. He said he had a nurse that was a woman of color. He didn't say what her ethnicity was, but he got the plasma treatment. They gave him that IV, that blood, and they attributed prayer, the good Lord healing him, and the plasma, the medical field that we have. And this guy, I've known him all my life, he's a good friend of mine. He looked at me and he said, you know, so I asked that nurse, said, can you tell me what color the skin was, the person that gave that blood? She said, no, I can't. His point being, whether that person that gave that blood that saved his life was Caucasian, African-American, yellow, red, didn't matter. We all bleed red. And that plasma saved his life. And to that, I just had to sit and say, you know, thanks for sharing that with me. And he's alive today because somebody, don't know who, gave that so he could live. And so I appreciate him communicating that story to me, and I wanted to share that with y'all.
Thank you, Tommy. Anything, Brett, Brandon?
No, I had a few contacts that I've got with Mr. Moorhead on, and we've resolved them. So that was it. Don't have a good story like Mr. Longhand, but I appreciate the word that she shared with us, that is true. We all do bleed red, so thank you.
Anything, Kurt?
No, sure.
Mark, okay, all right, good. Okay, so we'll move on to administrative agency reports and presentations. We have the introduction of new county employees, and County Manager Bright Moorhead will do that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have six new employees to announce. Health and Human Services, Cassie Kirkpatrick and Kristen Smith. Detention Center, we have Tiffany Moore and Sharon Littrell. Land Records is Daniel Weemhoff, and Tax Assessor is Cynthia Hannah. Those are new employees through August twenty-fourth.
They're not, I guess none of them are here this morning.
We quit inviting the, to keep the crowds now.
Right, okay, good. Okay, our next order, I mean, our next report will be Vaya Health Presentation, Understanding the Nature of Substance Abuse, Substance Use Disorders. And we have Vaya Health Chief Medical Officer, Dr. Craig Martin. And is Shelley here? Okay. Ira, are you doing this, Ira? Okay, yeah, come on.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners and Members of the Public. It's my pleasure to introduce the Chief Medical Officer of Vaya, which is Dr. Craig Martin. He's a distinguished life fellow of the American Psychiatric Association, which is the highest honor they give. It's for people that are both excellent practitioners and spend their life in public service. He is board certified as both a general psychiatrist in children and adult psychiatry, but also he's a board certified addiction specialist with the American Board of Preventive Medicine. So he holds dual certifications. He has a very long distinguished career, just a couple of highlights that may be of interest. He was the chief psychiatrist at the Naval Health Clinic, which was handling people coming in with traumatic brain injuries and PTSD from Iraq. And he's also worked with and taught at John Hopkins University and the University of Minnesota. So he's had a very long career and very much an expert in what he's going to discuss today, Dr. Martin.
Hey, welcome, Dr. Martin. Appreciate you coming this morning.
Thank you very much for having me. I really appreciate it. And I also want to thank the Commissioners for all they have done to support Vaya and our attempts to increase state funding for people with chronic illnesses, including substance use disorders. It's very much appreciated. Shelley Foreman could not be here today. She had a cough and wisely stayed home, so we are thankful for that. Also want to acknowledge, not only thanks for Ira, but also for Mark Plus, who serves on the County Commissioner Advisory Board. The goals for today were just to talk about preventable deaths in Haywood County. I wanted to give a brief overview of some of the numbers. Wanted to chat a little bit about the current science of addiction. And of course, since this is National Recovery Month, specifically talk about what each of us can do to help move things forward. But first, a little bit about Vaya. For those of you who don't know, Vaya is a political subdivision of the state of North Carolina and a local management entity, managed care organization. These are a lot of words, aren't they? We operate a Medicaid prepaid inpatient health plan on a capitated per member per month basis pursuant to a contract with North Carolina Medicaid. In addition to that, we manage state funding. Our mission as a public manager of care for individuals having challenges with mental illness, substance use, or intellectual and developmental disabilities is to successfully evolve into a healthcare system. We want to embrace innovation, adapt to a changing environment, and maximize resources for the long-term benefit of the people, but especially the communities that we serve. So our values include person-centeredness, integration, commitment, and integrity. I put up here the top three causes of preventable deaths in two thousand and seventeen. As you know, it sometimes takes a few years to get the data. But interestingly enough, substance use disorder is not up there, is it? It's tobacco, one, poor diet and physical inactivity, high blood pressure, number two, and alcohol use disorder is number three. People have sort of forgotten about alcohol use disorder. Now, what happened this year, along came COVID nineteen. So you've had some excellent presentations and data on that today. As of last Friday, there were about a hundred and eighty-six thousand U.S. COVID deaths and North Carolina approaching three thousand. Haywood County, sad to say, twenty-eight. And that compares with our U.S. estimated flu deaths last year of about thirty-four thousand, U.S. estimated alcohol-related deaths in two thousand and seventeen of eighty-eight thousand, and U.S. overdose drug deaths in two thousand and eighteen, sixty-seven thousand. Just a little bit of reference, prior pandemics and plagues. You remember the nineteen eighteen H one N one pandemic influenza, six hundred and seventy-five thousand deaths in the United States. Bubonic plague from thirteen forty-six to thirteen fifty-three, that little flea that caused such havoc, killed almost a third of the world's population, twenty-five million people. So how do pandemics affect health? Well, obviously, there's a delay sometimes in seeking medical care, a lot of stresses and anxiety due to loss of social connectedness, loss of jobs, housing loss, and also changes in our routine and structure. Having the kids home, having a spouse home, less time to kind of just relax and do what you need to do to keep yourself in order. The Kaiser Family Foundation did a survey in two thousand and nineteen, which showed that one in ten adults reported symptoms of anxiety and depression. Since COVID nineteen, they repeated that survey and found that one in three adults reported symptoms of anxiety and depression. So what does anxiety and depression do? Well, we try to cope, and sometimes they're healthy coping mechanisms, sometimes they're more maladaptive. They could be temporary, I need a drink to go to sleep, could become a habit, smoking each day helps keep me awake. It could become an addiction, those pills take away the pain, and it can also lead to chronic illness. So I put up here five chronic illnesses. Actually, I only put up four, didn't I? Chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, what you get from smoking too much, diabetes, which can be genetic, multifactorial, can also be due to weight gain and a diet, hypertension, and substance use disorders. Substance use disorder is a chronic illness. So if substance use disorder can become a chronic illness, what is the current understanding and definition of addiction? Bear with me on this, it's kind of complicated. But addiction is a treatable, chronic medical disease. It involves complex interactions among brain circuits. There's a part of the brain called the nucleus accumbens, and dopamine levels are affected by addiction in that. Genetics, you know, what mommy and daddy and grandma had, and the environment where you live, what are your social influences, what are your stressors? And of course, our individual life experiences. And as you heard from Mr. Dove, I know a fair amount about that experience from working with people coming back from Iraq and Afghanistan. Addiction can result in an individual engaging in destructive behaviors as they pursue reward or relief. So addiction is characterized by an inability to consistently abstain, impairment in behavioral control, cravings, diminished recognition of significant problems with one's behavior and interpersonal relationships. I would guess there's probably not, anybody in the room has not experienced that with somebody they care about. Diminished recognition of significant problems with one's behavior and interpersonal relationships, and then a dysfunctional emotional response. So like other chronic diseases, addiction often involves cycles of relapse and remission. We talk about relapse and remission, and I wanted to just share with you a little bit about what Vaya is doing to try to help with federal state grant funding to encourage people to be able to stay in recovery, and if they do have a relapse, regain their recovery for as long of a remission as possible. Last year, almost a quarter of a million dollars have gone to mountain projects to provide federal and state grant funds for alcohol and electronic vapor product use. This is primary prevention. As you know, we sort of have it backwards in healthcare. We spend way too much at the end stage and not enough at the prevention stage. But this is what we're trying to do to help keep people from falling into the addiction cycle. Two hundred and eighty-three thousand is spent each year for the Haywood County Detention Medication Assisted Treatment Program in partnership with Haywood Pathways. And that also has included dispensing Narcan, which is the antidote for opioid overdose, to first responders. A hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars each year for the Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion Program, that's LEED, operated by the North Carolina Harm Reduction Coalition. Two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in services for uninsured with an opioid use disorder in fiscal year nineteen twenty in Haywood County. Three hundred thousand for the DSS Family Treatment $300,000 for the DSS Family Treatment Pilot, which works with families who have been or are at risk of being involved in the foster care system due to substance use disorders. How that works is the Department of Social Services makes referrals to a comprehensive care center, where then the client has a choice, patient has a choice of several places, and then engage in treatment, and hopefully reestablish their recovery and continue to care effectively and appropriately for their children. So what are the goals for preventable deaths? Obviously, prevention. Secondly, harm reduction, early intervention, culturally humble treatment, ongoing engagement, understanding of relapses, and understanding of best practices research. And one of the things we're finding is that what we thought worked 10, 20, 30 years ago doesn't necessarily work the same way that we thought it did, and we need to change our ways. You heard that I've been in this field for a little while. You can't see that I'm long on the tooth because I have on a mask, but what I would say is that back when I was a kid, almost every one of my friends had a tonsillectomy and adenoidectomy. How many kids get that these days? So we realized that that was probably not an appropriate intervention for everybody. With addiction medicine, we're learning more and more about what works and what doesn't work, and sometimes it bumps up against what we have as devoutly held beliefs. But there are certain things that we can do. We can become a recovery ally, if we're not already. What do I mean by that? Think about the language we use, think about how we reach out to people who are in need, people who need help. If somebody has a diabetic coma and their blood sugar goes too high and they go to Mission Hospital, the doctor doesn't come out and say, "Well, I'm sorry, James, but you know, you had a dirty blood." So why would we use words like dirty when people have opioids in their urine? We can support prevention in healthy communities, and that's what this organization does a lot of. We can practice self-care and utilize available supports, which is easier said, obviously, than done. Get a flu vaccine to minimize the risk of influenza. Wouldn't it be great if we knew when we got sick in the fall that it wasn't the flu we had because we had taken advantage of the vaccine, and we can save some of those resources and hospital beds for treatment of COVID-19? Monitor our use of harmful drugs and substances with a goal of sobriety. As you know, there's been an increase nationwide in opioid deaths and alcohol use disorder subsequent to COVID-19. Take time to exercise, avoid excess alcohol, don't smoke, eat well. If a habit is becoming harmful, seek additional supports. I want to thank you for hearing my presentation today, and if there are any questions, I would be happy to entertain those.
For Dr. Martin. I know, I know one of the problems that we have today is they keep cutting your funding, you know, the state does, I guess, and everything. So it seems like the rise in addictions has almost gone up while funding has gone down to try to help treat people, and I think that's one of the biggest problems probably that we have.
It really is, and we've appreciated this group's advocacy. And as you know, there are an increasing number of people who are having a hard time just making it from day to day and week to week with the current economic situation. So anything we can do to help get that funding to people so they can reestablish a life worth living is important.
And I have, I've had a lot of people, the facility in Balsam, did it close recently?
Yes, there was a, there was a facility that was called a Facility-Based Crisis Program that did close in terms of 24-hour treatment, but they continue to be open with mobile crisis and other types of services. But funding was what caused that to close. If we had more funding, we could have more of those types of programs.
Yeah, okay. I've just had people request that we try to reinstitute that, and you know, it's a state deal, so I guess, I mean, that's where the funding comes from, right?
Correct, yeah. Part of the problem with those sorts of programs is they require continuous, ongoing funding and not just block grant funding. Same thing with medication assisted treatment. It's not a good idea to put somebody on treatment and then cut them off from that treatment because then they're at higher risk of problems if they relapse.
Exactly, yeah, okay. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, our next item of the agency reports is the Recreation and Parks Departmental Update. We have Recreation and Parks Assistant Director Ian Smith and Recreation Advisory Board Chair Kevin Fitzgerald this morning. Welcome, Ian.
Hey, good morning. My name's Ian Smith. I'm the Assistant Director for Haywood County Recreation, and this morning, we're going to have a department update from the 1920 fiscal year and currently what we have ongoing. But before we get to that, I'm going to bring Kevin Fitzgerald, the Chairman of the Rec Advisory Board, forward, as Tommy Thomas, one of our instructors in our fly fishing program for the past year.
Welcome, Kevin.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I am the Chairman of your Recreation and Parks Advisory Board, and been in that role for the last few years. Have the pleasure of working with Commissioner Rogers, and most recently, and then Commissioner Kirk Patrick prior to that. So been very fortunate to have some great Commissioners join us on the board. I just want to give you a quick synopsis of some things that have happened within the last, say, year and a half that I think you'd find interesting, and that is the board with the staff undertook a process about a year and a half ago of looking at the programming that the department was conducting and trying to decide if there might be a better way to serve the residents of Haywood County. And in that process, you know, we looked in a lot of programming that basically laid out the department as being kind of a mile wide, an inch deep on a number of program areas. And so the outcome of that was to make a recommendation to refocus on an emphasis on outdoor recreation. I mean, Haywood County has some of the most incredible outdoor natural resources of any county in the country, literally. You think about more peaks over 6,000 feet in this county than any place east of the Mississippi River. You think about the abundance of federal and state lands here between the Gray Smoky Mountains National Park and the Blue Ridge Parkway and Pisgah National Forest, Nantahala National Forest. You've got Lake Logan, Lake Junaluska, the Greenways, Pigeon River running through this county and all the forks and branches that come off of that. So there's a real plethora of outdoor resources to be taking advantage of. And so, under the guidance of Mr. David Francis, with credible staffers like Ian Smith, the Assistant Director, and Betty Green, the focus did change. And so you'll hear more about some programs that are being undertaken of late, including some guided hiking programs that are being done, the fly fishing program, an orienteering program, in addition to some of the sports leagues, there's still involvement in that. But I'm one of eight, nine people who have signed up to be guides guiding these hikes, anywhere from easy to moderate to strenuous. I've been fortunate to have been paired with Mr. Greg Shuping, your EMS Director. So if I have a medical issue, he can, he can save me while I'm in the woods and also get me out of there. So some of the new opportunities with Chestnut Mountain, that property coming to the town of Canton and Haywood County, and the county has been involved in that, not only monetarily, but participating in comments on how that property should be developed. I also serve on the Board of the Southern Appalachian Highlands Conservancy. So I'm involved in looking at tracks of property to be brought in and protected as well, and that was one of those, one of those properties. But what's happening at Francis Farm with the capping of the landfill and some opportunities there for some potential recreational activities, which is not uncommon for capped landfills around this country. So there are, there are plenty of opportunities and things that are happening. And I'll just give you a quick example, in June, when, because people are, people are really dying to go outside right now with COVID-19 and all the evidence showing that outdoor activities are safer than being indoors. We guided a hike over Sam's Knob back in June, one of the first ones we did for the county, Greg and I did. And at the end of Black Balsam, the road there at Black Balsam, that mile-long road, the parking lot was slam full at 7:30 in the morning. When we finished our hike, about five hours later, and I was driving out from the end, I counted over 300 vehicles on that one-mile stretch of road. That's crazy. And every parking area from Devil's Courthouse all the way back to Balsam Gap was slam full of people who were on the Mountain Sea Trail or various trails in the Shining Rock Wilderness and so forth. So every hike that we have done has been full, and there's a waiting list. People are clamoring to get out, and the staff is doing a wonderful job of screening people to make sure they're not undertaking things that they're not prepared for. The last thing I'll leave you with is, last year, in the Smoky Mountain News, there was an ad that was put in there by the Jackson County Tourism Development Group. And it said, and I still have a picture of it, that tourists and visitors to Jackson County spend over $580,000 a day in Jackson County. Now, if you do the math times 365, that's $210 million that are going to Jackson County by people who are going there to hike, to fish, to float, to recreate, and they're staying in hotels and bed and breakfasts, and they're eating in restaurants, and they're shopping on Main Street. And I don't know what the figure is for Haywood County, but I do know that I see a lot of those cars driving past here on their way to Jackson County. And so I think that everyone should be, I think, pleased and excited to know that your Recreation Department is looking at trying to capture some of that and bring that business here to Haywood County because we all know that the economy is important and it'll help us all. So that's all that I have, and if you have any questions for me, I'll, I'll be hanging around and I'll turn it back over to Ian.
Thank you, Ken.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Tommy Thomas, and I teach fly fishing for the Haywood County Recreation Department. They had told me that I have allotted for three minutes, but at my age, you can see it takes longer than three minutes just to walk up here to the podium. We have, in our classes, we have four sessions. They're two hours each, and in that, we have an intermediate and a beginner class that goes down. We teach that there are different kinds in the first class of fly fishing. There is actually saltwater fly fishing and freshwater fly fishing, which most of the freshwater we know around here. But the big difference is in saltwater fly fishing, the fish have teeth and they will bite you. Also, if you ever get the opportunity to hook a bonefish when you're fly fishing in the saltwater, it takes off at 100 miles an hour and strips every bit of line off your reel. You hope that your knots hold. But then you find, and you can start reeling him back in, you think you got him. He takes one look at you and he gets up and goes off again at 100 miles an hour. But this time, you look down at your reel and it's smoking because your drag is on fire. Now that is exhilarating, and it's just as exhilarating when you're fishing in the freshwater as well. We talk about the history of fly fishing, some of which has its roots right here in western North Carolina, and that's the history for the United States. We don't go over the pond. I teach to the class that one of the best books you can get to learn fly fishing is through Tom Rosenbauer of the Orvis Company called Prospecting for Trout. You will learn more in that book than you will in any other of the books written, and that just comes from my own personal opinion. In each of the three of the first four classes, we practice casting and a lot of it. In the beginner class, we practiced nothing but the basic casting. But then when we go into the intermediate class, we learn about the roll cast, the steeple cast, then also a cast that I developed myself called the Tommy Cast, where we use for streamer casting. And then the last one is the, I'm getting there, the bow and arrow cast, which you use a lot here in western North Carolina when you're fishing under trees, and it is exactly what it's called. In class number two, I start with tying flies and actually expose the students to fly tying and the exhilaration of that as well. And in that, the whole structure of all the four classes is exposure, and exposing the individuals to fly fishing, getting away from the "I can't do it" attitude that you get most of the time. We talk about the four basic flies I fly, the streamer flies, the nymphs, and the terrestrials, this being terrestrial time right now. We talk about the flies that have been generated right here, many of them right here in the Smoky Mountains in western North Carolina, one of which is called the yellow hammer. But oddly enough, in western North Carolina, there's an R inserted in it and it's called the yowler hammer. Why is that? I don't know, but it's just colloquial, I'm sure. In class number three, we talk about the bugs that trout eat. And I actually take the students down to the stream and turn over rocks, pick up a rock and show them the nymphs that are living on the bottom of the rock. They lived there for two years, and then one day, all of a sudden, they decide, they come to the surface, they mate, they lay their eggs, and die. And that's it, after two years, and that's one of the big food sources for trout. In class number four, we take a field trip. We go to the west fork of the Pigeon River. I teach them how to rig a rod, how to put the line on it, and also we learn how to, for trout fishing etiquette, etiquette on the stream. Every one of us are ambassadors when we go out to trout fishing. We're ambassadors to our county right here, and we have to learn the etiquette. If we go out on the stream and there's an individual already there, we talk to that individual first, tell him what our intention is, find out what he's doing and going through. We have guest speakers that come through. A good friend of mine, Mr. Russ Harris, I have him demonstrate casting because he's one of the best I've ever seen. We have Caitlin Warsham from Haywood Waterways. She's been to several of our classes and teaches what Haywood Waterways does. That's something you should be extremely proud of, by the way. I have Officer Tanner Baldwin, who is the North Carolina Wildlife Police, come and speak to the class as well. There, again, you should be proud. Tanner was born right here in Haywood County, and he works right in the Haywood County area, a great, great individual, and again, an ambassador to the sport. 95% of fly fishermen don't realize at all that it's not the fish that they seek, but the solitude. Once you learn that lesson, then you are truly a fly fisherman. I thank you for your audience. If you have any questions or anything, I'm available to you.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? I'll just say that I was fortunate to have a grandfather that taught me how to fly fish, and I remember, I was just sitting here thinking about that when you were talking about, he taught me one time, he got addicted to fly fishing. So I guess that was a good addiction, hopefully, but he said that's all he wanted to do was go fly fish. And so, but he taught me how to fly fish, and I've, actually, I've still got his, his rod from, I forget what it was, it was real expensive, I know. I know I don't ever use it because I don't want to break it and stuff, but it was a lot of good memories from my childhood.
You won't break it. It's probably a bamboo rod, if not an early fiberglass, and if it is, they're stronger than steel. So don't worry about it. Take it out on the water.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks to Tommy and Kevin, and Greg as well, and all of our guides and instructors have been absolutely wonderful throughout this time. So to start with, right on the So to start with, right on the front, we have updated our logo. There on the left is our old logo that had been in use since, before I came on board, I think, since the department came back around '99. So we have updated our new logo that was done by a local artist in our region. And to review the 1920 programs that we offered, first off, we had our Fall Soccer Program. It's a small-sided adult soccer league, 18 and over, takes place at Allen's Creek Park at games or on Sundays, sometimes on Mondays in the summer, and we average about seven teams for that. It's a great, great family ordeal. Last year, August 2019, was our first attempt at fly fishing, and we got off to a good start. It was smaller than what we've done so far this year, but by no means was it anything less. Rec basketball, probably our largest program that we offer, that takes place about December through late February for kids ages five through 12. We have four different age brackets, and normally, we fill up all of them except for our upper-reaching 11-, 12-year-olds. Indoor soccer, going off of the Fall Soccer Adult League, this is just more of a pickup style, come and play, $3 at the door, and that's generally very well-attended. We average, I think, somewhere about 25 with that, but I'll get to that later. And unfortunately, the Senior Games was canceled this year due to COVID-19 concerns. Those games take place about late April to late May, and that was right when we had the coronavirus lockdown coming in, so we felt like we could not do that in good faith, especially for a group that is at risk, or high-risk, I should say. So, registration for the 1920 fiscal year. The outliers basketball, we push about over 200 with that. Last year was 202, and that was down from the previous year, just because the 11-, 12- age group kind of fluctuates depending on, I guess, how the kids are feeling, which one of them makes the middle school basketball team and such, and who decides that they do not want to, no longer play basketball. Fall soccer as well, that is pushing 100. I think we had 95, seven different teams. The Senior Games on there, as we did not have it this past year, I included that from the 18-, 19 fiscal year, just to show you all where that normally stacks up. That was at 113. That makes it our second-largest program during that fiscal year, as well as indoor soccer, 95, and fly fishing, we're around 15 there, 10 to 15, I think, for that. Average attendance, basketball takes it way through the roof, pushing nearly 700. Something to keep in mind with that is that also includes parents and coaches in attendance. We have three games per division, four age divisions, and it racks up very quickly throughout the one Saturday on a game day. As well as fall soccer, I think we had about 168 was our average attendance, and that is largely due to it being a family ordeal, where players will come, bring their kids, they'll play on the playground at Allen's Creek Park, parents will bring some food, have a good old time. So that's why those are outliers, heavy outliers in that. And all the rest of them look small in comparison, but they're still very good for the type of program that we're offering in the size of them. Are there any questions on the 1920 year before I delve into what we're doing currently? So currently, we have hiking and fly fishing. If you look back at that previous slide there, that picture on the bottom left was one of our first classes from August 2019. I think we had a total of 13 or 14 in attendance there. And then to this picture on the right, that is the first Saturday to the West Fork of the Pigeon River at our beginner class. That class was completely filled up. We capped it at 25 due to, you know, trying to stay in line with max participants and stuff for outside events. So that filled up. I think we had about 24 there that day. And then the picture on the left was from one of our very first hikes to Black Balsam Tenet Mountain. The programs are kind of in a different situation right now than they normally would be. Currently pending is the rec basketball program, due to the fact that we have nearly 700 attendees coming through our locations in a six-hour time span on a Saturday. We don't feel like we can necessarily offer that at the current situation. We are looking into a basketball camp, though, as a backup option, just in case. Indoor soccer, same thing. We average, I think, 25 there a night, and given a small location, does not seem very reasonable right now, as well as the availability of those locations. Senior Games, for the same reason why as it was canceled in the previous year, as well as spring and summer soccer, but we're hoping that when we turn into the new year, 2021, we'll have a better idea of what we're going to be able to offer in the next calendar year. And unfortunately, we had to cancel the Fall Soccer League for this year. Now, the picture on the bottom left is of four of our Senior Games participants when they won medals at Raleigh for their various games that they participated in. However, Ruth Elson there on the far left, she had just won a national medal, the National Senior Games in Albuquerque in 2019. I think it was bronze in shuffleboard, which is very impressive. So delving further into our new programs, the hiking program that we started, first hike was in June of this year, and we cap those at 10 participants, mainly for safety and logistical reasons. We don't want to take a group of 30 to 25 hikers out there on a trail, one for experience, but also in case hard keeping up with that many numbers. So on the right, that is just a general flyer, or sorry, a calendar that we have, that we put out through the local newspaper and our social media as well, and states everything from the distance, the elevation they can expect, elevation gain, who they're going to be hiking with, where they're going, how we would rate them, beginner, easy, moderate, or strenuous. As much information as possible, yet vague at the same time, because we want to filter them through us. That way, we make sure we're getting to the right hike. If we have somebody that says, "Well, I've never been hiking before, but I really want to try it," and "Water Rock to Black Rock sounds pretty cool," well, that's a strenuous hike, 4.75 miles, and you're gaining nearly 2,500-foot elevation. So we're going to steer them away from that and put them towards something more of a frying pan tower or Mount Pisgah, something easier, something they can do right off the bat, so they're not biting off more than they can chew. And on the left side, that was the map that was given to our participants for graveyard fields for our hike on August 26th. That was very well-attended as well. Onto fly fishing. The flyer on the right is one went out about May, June, detailing what all the program was encompassing. So we had the beginner course, which stuck around from 2019. We added on top of that to the intermediate course, as well as we offered a, what we called expeditions, which was, at that point, a two-hour guided tour through local trout waters. That was very popular, so we upped it to three hours, just to make sure we had everybody covered. And the expeditions, participants that arrive at those will receive a map there on the left. It's not the exact one they'll receive. Ray Sugg, our expedition guide, has made one himself that he has thrown in a lot of his knowledge and experience that he's gained over the past couple of years doing this. But that's something similar, and we've been going to Jonathan Creek for that, and that really hits on the, I guess, idea that we're trying to get into people's minds, is that you can drive 30, 45 minutes and go fish at the West Fork of the Pigeon, but you can also go right in your backyard into Jonathan Creek and have just a great time and experience fly fishing as well. So lower that barrier to entry as well. Registration and attendance numbers, hiking was very successful, 95, pushing there about. The beginner course at 70, and the intermediate course looking around 20. One thing to keep in mind is that we've had three intermediate courses, sorry, three beginner courses, and we actually have our final intermediate course of the year, starting this Thursday. That'll last on until the end of September. And expeditions, we've had six of those to date, and we have six to come between September and the end of October. So those numbers are likely to rise. Hiking, as we said, our average attendance number is eight, and we cap that artificially to make sure that we are being as safe as possible. And fly fishing, beginner and intermediate, we see great average attendance, and the expeditions are lower, but they are no less popular. We cap those at seven for safety reasons as well. We can guarantee that Ray Sugg, our instructor, has enough time to go around and speak to So where we'll compare to the 1920 fiscal year, currently, fly fishing would be our second-largest. That would bump out the Senior Games just by a hair, if the Senior Games were happening in the 2019 fiscal year. Basketball is still the outlier. That's still very hard to top, coming in 202 to 220. And hiking would be there, about indoor soccer. But something to keep in mind is hiking is expected to rise to 148 registrations by the end of October, and fly fishing is expected to rise to 160 by the end of October. So we'd make those our second and third-largest programs, all within one year of being in existence, which is pretty phenomenal, considering us taking our new direction. So what is next for the remainder of the fiscal year, as well as the future? We have a navigation course that is coming up. That'll be done by our hike guides, leaning heavily on Kevin and Greg's experience. That'll be held locally at Chestnut Mountain, and that'll center around land navigation, how to find your way with just a compass and a map if you were ever to get lost out in the woods. And we're doing it in a controlled environment. We figured that'd be much better than doing it out in the middle of Black Rock. Fly tying, that is a new course. We've had a lot of feedback on that from our participants, that when they cover fly tying in Tommy's courses, that they want to do it themselves and learn how to do that. So that's an upcoming program. We're trying to get rolled out before the end of the calendar year, hoping by November. And mountain biking, as you can see, the bottom-right picture, those are four bikes that we have secured. We're still waiting on two to three more, in the hopes of starting a local NICA team. NICA is the National Interscholastic Cycling Association. It's done in association with the school system, and it's just another way to get kids active at a younger age, starting middle school up to high school as well. Haywood County currently has a team, but it just has one participant and their father, so we're going to try to give them a boost a little bit. We have, the Recreation Advisory Board has approved plans to update the Recreation Master Plan of 2007 for $39,000, and we're trying to secure the funding through various grants. But it's important that we do so, so we can leverage future Partif funds, which is the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund. Develop recreation spaces on county flood properties, specifically put-ins for kayaks and small rafts, but we have not confirmed a site yet. That was all put on the back burner about March. And planning the Francis Farm Landfill Bike Park and Pump Track Trail System. We've put together a steering committee that has been formed to lead the planning and designing of the Francis Farm Bike Park. They'll meet later this month for the first time, but that is specifically geared towards beginner and entry-level mountain biking. Back in October, a couple people from our department, David, Kevin, got the opportunity to go to the Outdoor Community Conference, and Outdoor Economy Conference, sorry. And one thing they stressed to us there was lower the barrier to entry. We don't want any overhead fees. Mountain bikes can get crazy expensive, and we don't want anybody to try to pay that right off the jump to get into it, nor do we want them going out and doing something that you would find in Colorado, some sort of double-black diamond trail. That's not going to end well, or provide a good experience. So we are trying to target the entry level, people to get a footing in these outdoor events, specifically hiking, fly fishing, mountain biking. That way, they build up the confidence and then can capitalize on the natural resources that we have available here in Haywood County. A funny story before I go, well, funny also, interesting. A couple of my friends were out hiking on the Parkway, and they didn't go early. They went about 10, 11, thought it'd be fun. And the parking lot all filled up. I think it was on Black Mountain, or sorry, Black Balsam, and so the fire service rode there, people were parked all along it. So they went up to the top of it, and as they were coming back down, one of my friends said he started counting license plates for all the different states. Said he counted 40 different states that were here in Haywood County coming to hike, which is pretty incredible when you think about it, and shows the potential that what we have to tap into. Are there any questions?
I wish we could get our trails, you know, once we get, I think, when we get our trails kind of built, maybe, identified, I think you're right, it's going to, I mean, we're already seeing it now, and I think there's a potential to have a lot of trails, especially with the purchase in Maggie, Maggie Valley, from the Conservation Trust that's buying those tracks in the watershed for Maggie Valley's sanitary district, so.
Definitely, yeah. The need is there. Participants have to drive through Haywood County to get to either Fire Mountain over in Cherokee or to anything in Buncombe County. So why not make a pit stop here?
Yeah, we've got some great, I mean, Water Rock and All is the highest point on the Parkway, so we've got some, we've got some great opportunities to do something like that. I was wondering, on your August hike, did you, was you ever picking any blueberries?
Did we pick any blueberries?
Yeah.
Yes, I was on that hike personally, yeah. It was great.
That was good, that was good to go that time of year to be able to do that. That's something else I did when I was a kid, so.
Yeah, I don't think the Bears have gotten all of them yet, so.
Yeah. I went up there, I may not forget, I went up there, and I had about a two-gallon pail, and somebody was making fun of us, my grandfather and myself, because they're real small. And I wish he'd been around when we left, because that pail was full, you know, and stuff, because my grandfather was serious when he went up there to get it. I mean, that's part of his routine, yearly routine, is go up there and get huckleberries that he could eat on the rest of the year, so. But anyway, that was a lot of fun, a lot of memories too there, so.
Good.
But I'm glad you picked that time.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? I've been taking a long time.
No questions. I just had a comment. I appreciate Ian and Kevin and David as well, the whole board and the staff as well. The work that they're putting into our recreation department, I think, is great. I'm excited about our new focus, which is outdoor recreation, and I just appreciate all the work that you guys put in, so thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Commissioner.
Yeah, thank you all, and thank you, Tommy, with the fly fishing. I think that's great. I mean, it just lends into our area, what we have to offer. I mean, recreation is, you know, a lot of, I mean, a lot of counties have a larger recreation center, but we have the recreation areas that our government owns, and all we've got to do is figure out how to develop them properly and be able to, you know, have trails for hikes and trout fishing. We have tons of streams, so this is a great way for us to use our natural resources to be able to establish, you know, a top-notch recreation program, and I appreciate the vision and everybody's work in doing this. Okay, our next order of business, or our next item will be the Sheriff's Department Law Enforcement Contract with the Town of Clyde, and we have our sheriff and chief deputy here this morning, Sheriff Christopher and Chief Deputy Haines. Welcome, guys.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. That last conversation helps us to realize how much more that we need to put into our search and rescue issues and conversation, because let me tell you, it's every weekend that we have to go and find somebody and either carry them out, or at least walk them out. And as we, that just reminded me of that as I was listening to this conversation.
We have to have the Haywood County Park Service here, you know.
Yes.
There are officers just for that.
I'll be as quick as I can with this. We were approached by the City of Clyde some time ago and was asked to take a look at becoming their law enforcement, and we put it off, and we've put it off, and we've put it off, and they keep coming back to us, and we finally got to the point that we thought that it would be a good idea to go ahead and take a look at this. And our chief deputy has spent a lot of time in the last couple of months, working very diligently on this with the Town of Clyde to help them and to hopefully help us as well. You know, the center of our county is Clyde, and everybody's traveling either one way or the other to and from and through. And so hopefully, as, if this is completed and signed, then it'll be something that not only helps the Town of Clyde, but it'll help us as well, I believe. We have assisted Clyde for the entire time that I've been the sheriff with any of their serious law enforcement issues, and we have lent them a detective or two or three, and sometimes some of our patrol guys for years. So I think that this will only enhance what happens in Clyde from a professional law enforcement standpoint. standpoint. You have before you that contract. We are going to go back and tweak some numbers today that we will send back to you to, to look at. But this provides service for the Town of Clyde 24 hours a day, seven days a week for them to have a deputy sheriff in that one mile vicinity, except for when that they would be going out to back us up like they already do or responding to a mutual aid situation like that they already do. So do you have any questions about, about that? And, and one other thing is I wanted to be very specific and let our citizens know that this is not going to cost the county taxpayers any money whatsoever. The Town of Clyde realizes that they have to fund a police department and so they are going to pay us to, to completely fund that, or should I say pay the, the county, reimburse the county for whatever expenses that we have. This is a five-year contract and we would like for it to begin on October the 1st, if, if possible.
I think they're providing space for you.
Yes, sir. They, we will have an office there in their administrative building there, their town hall.
Then their equipment, Sheriff, the, the equipment that they have now, will they just be transferring that to the county?
Yes, sir.
Or will we have to buy it?
No, no, they, they are, they are literally going to give the county every piece of equipment that they have from a law enforcement standpoint to include weapons, ammunition, uniforms, vehicles, everything that, that they have will, would be, would be turned over and would be part of, of our inventory.
Okay, great. Anybody have any questions for the Sheriff?
Sheriff, will the cars remain the same, that be marked as Clyde or will they be marked as a Sheriff's Department car?
Great question. We're, we're going to mark those as Haywood County Sheriff's Office, but they asked that we put on the lower panel on five of the cars Clyde Patrol, so that they will be identified and, and the citizens at Clyde will know that, that their finances is going as well. So they, they will be marked just like ours though.
Okay.
And they also ask for marked patrol vehicles with bar lights on top, so, and they're going to pay for that as well, so.
I think this is a way for Clyde to be able to have employees that have their own state retirement system. I know that was a big issue that they had.
It is.
Retaining help, so.
The, the mayor and I and Joey have talked about this numerous times, how that they're, they are one of two city police departments here in North Carolina that did not offer state retirement per se as everybody else in the state does. And it just made it very, very difficult for them to recruit and to be able to even have people who might even want to work in Clyde, who's got some tenure and experience from somewhere else. There was no way to transfer that time. They would be starting completely over in a retire, in a, in a different retirement system. And that's just nowadays with, with the way things are, that's very, very difficult for them to recruit, so.
Okay, anybody have any other questions?
And this indicates you, you have one officer on duty all the time, 24 hours a day?
Yes, so what we're going to do is we will have a sergeant that supervises the four deputies and there will be one deputy on each of our shift assigned to Clyde. Now, it will be the same deputy, they, they will be assigned to Clyde as, because we want them to get to know the residents and the citizens there. We, we do our best from a county perspective of community policing. Of course, community policing is a little bit harder whenever you have the square miles that we do and six deputies out working patrol at any one time. That makes it pretty difficult, but hopefully in the Town of Clyde, well, we will implement that community policing because we want those citizens down there to know who those guys and girls are that's going to be working there because, and we want them to know them on a first name basis. Well, some of the questions that was asked when we went down to the Town of Clyde to have their Q and A was that, hey, these, these residents are very concerned that, because they wanted to know who these, who these law enforcement officers were that was going to be working there, because they, they still do things in Clyde like we all wish that we could, so.
Are you going to be able to utilize the, the facility there with that? Will you have the deputy stay there or will he just be in his patrol car, patrol?
Well, whenever that the sergeant's there, I'm sure the sergeant will be utilizing that office a whole lot more than, than hopefully a deputy will be, but they will be allowed 24/7 access there. And Joey, Ms. Garland is going to post in their city or their town newsletter, the schedule for the sergeant, so that people inside the town will be able to come by and see supervision if they need to.
I think the employees that they have currently, the, the law enforcement employees will be able to make application for these new positions.
Yes, sir. The, the chief deputy actually hand-delivered applications down there about three weeks ago.
Okay, great. And then we'll be voting on this on our next meeting.
Yes, sir.
About it, so. Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank y'all for coming.
Hey, thank, thank you.
Do you have anything, Jeff?
No, sir.
Okay, okay.
He's just the guy that's done all the work.
Yeah. Sounds like you fielded him pretty good. Okay, I have no, does anyone have discussion or adjustment to the agenda at all? Okay, we'll move on to our next order of business is our consent agenda. And I'll read through these and if you have any questions at the end, we'll come back. Number one is to request approval of the August 17th, 2020 regular meeting minutes. Number two is to request approval of a library application to the North Carolina State Aid for Public Libraries to promote aid and equalize public library service in the amount of $106,416 for fiscal year 2021. That's attachment four. Number three is to request approval to accept and appropriate a grant from the Dogwood Health Trust to the County Administration Department in the amount of $5,000 for census incentives for counties. That's under attachment five, and I believe that Mr. McGowan that was here earlier spoke to that. Number four is to request approval to accept and appropriate a grant from Pisgah Health Foundation to the Public Health Department in the amount of $50,000 for medication assisted treatment program in the public health for fiscal year 2020, 2021. That's under attachment six. Number five is to request approval of the following budget amendments. A is the General Fund, Health and Human Service Agency Public Health, $156,534 for federal funding from the CDC Division of Public Health Communicable Disease Branch for the support of contact tracing and strategic planning in response to the coronavirus pandemic. It's under attachment seven. And B of the, of those amendments is from the General Fund from Health and Human Service Agency DSS Meals on Wheels, $5,000 to recognize the grant awarded by the Pisgah Health Foundation for website development to better reflect the program's services and highlight the needs to serve seniors and adults with disabilities. That's under attachment eight. And then C from the budget amendments is from the General Fund, Health and Human Service Agency Public Health, $15,300 to recognize the grant awarded by the Dogwood Health Trust to provide 300 COVID-19 tests for the uninsured population of the county. That's under attachment nine. Does anyone have any questions of the consent agenda this morning? I'll entertain a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Say.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, our next order of business is a regular agenda and the first item is to request approval of revisions to the Health and Human Service Agency Board Operating Procedures, Health and Human Service Agency Ira, Director Iredov, welcome, Ira. This is under attachment 10.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, annually, the Health and Human Services Board goes through its operating procedures and looks to see what would need to be revised or what would be appropriate. This year, they voted unanimously to make some changes to the procedures. And one brought about directly by the pandemic was changing the procedures for electronic meetings. They have been doing a lot of these things under the setup for how they operate meetings. These were taken, modeled in, in some respects off of the procedures that this board chose to have the different aspects of their electronic meetings held. They actually do a telephonic call for most of their meetings since March. So these procedures will make it a little clearer how that's to operate. One big change, public comment is important. Shifting to the written format, candidly, this is a recommendation of IT for those meetings to only just go to written format ahead of time on public comment, because the way the technology works is you have to patch together two separate meetings, one for the public that is, allows them to hear only, and then one for the board when they go to patch these together. Sometimes the technology works, sometimes it doesn't. And the public can always hear, but it, but it's done some different issues. The second change that they have is to public comment in general. The Health and Human Services Board, you, y'all are an elected governing board. They are really more of a policy and advisory board for you and public comment is important, but the recognition is that they want to operate in some regards more like an advisory and policy board, I believe. And so they are asking to change that, to, to focus more on written public comment. If people want to call in comments, they, they certainly would be welcome. And if there was a topic that the board liked, if they were doing the budget and they wanted to have verbal public comment, when that's capable, they would, they would have the ability to do that under the procedures. And then if someone shows up because of a novel thing and the chair wanted to add that, that could be done as well, but they wanted a little more control over the, the stream and flow of the meetings. And again, because they are not a governing board anymore. So those are the suggested changes and the thoughts behind the changes that I'm aware of, but they did vote unanimously to, to recommend this to you.
Okay, Brandon, you're on that board, did you?
Yes, yeah, I'm on that board. This is some changes that we recommended. We were having a lot of problems trying to patch the public in to our electronic meetings. A lot of difficulties there and we wanted to be sure that everyone in the public had the opportunity to comment. And so we figured going to the written format, that way it's going to be emailed to each board member prior to the meeting and then they can have that comment, you know, before and after the meeting if they want to review it. So this way we make sure everybody is heard, because before we did have some problems, a few people would be patched in and then others would not, and there's a lot of frustration there. So we decided to make these changes. This is the biggest changes anyway, so. It was unanimous.
If someone makes a written request or a, a public comment, will that be read at the meeting and discussed at the meeting or, and, and will all of the public comments be read?
Go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry. All of the comments will be forwarded to the board before the meeting. They'll list them and the chair, you may get, a topic may came up, but they get 10 public comments on the same comment. So the chair would choose what was reflective. They won't be fully read every comment, because some of these comments run pages, but they will all be forwarded to the board and they will all be preserved. So the board will have the full opportunity to read them all and as Commissioner Rogers said, after the meeting, they can read them, they can still reflect and act on them.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion that we approve the revisions to the Health and Human Services, Health and Human Services Agency Board Operating Procedures.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you, Ira.
Thank you.
And number two of the regular agenda is to request approval of a memorandum of understanding between the Town of Canton and Haywood County to extend water and sewer lines in the Beaver Dam Industrial Park to appropriate funds in the amount of $110,000 to cover materials, survey and engineering, and for the county manager to execute necessary documents for the project. And we have our project, program administrator, David Francis, here this morning. This is under attachment 11.
Morning Commissioners, again. Before you is a memorandum of understanding between the Town of Canton and the county. Back in 1993, the county purchased 100 acres to create the Beaver Dam Industrial Park. Since that time, there's three businesses located in there, pay an average about $500 plus thousand dollars in taxes each year. In 2008, the county, along with Haywood Advancement Foundation, developed a 10-acre pad at the, near the end of the side of Great Oak Drive. When they completed that project, for some reason, I don't know exactly why, they did not run water and sewer to the top of the pad. The sewer terminates at, right at the Plus Building, which is now Airmark, and water goes up by Great Oak Drive that we're going to extend from there. But there was never any water that got, actually made it to the pad. So we've had three companies that, and we're still a, there, that we get to this point and we say, they talk about, you know, what utilities are up here and we say, none. You mean, there's no utilities up here? No, there's no water sewer, there's no electrical, there's no gas. And utilities on the electrical side are easy to explain because Duke Power will come in there and tailor what that company needs. Dominion Energy will go there and tailor what that, what that company needs. But there's only so much water, you know, there's an eight inch line out there and that's how much water's going there, 10 inch sewer line, and that's what we'll be working on. So it's kind of odd and we've asked, we've applied for grants each time to extend those utilities up there. Duke and Dominion have been great with that. Golden Leaf is willing to help us out when we get a, a project, but it has to be a certain size before eligible for those grants. We've applied for other grants back in the summer and we're not eligible because we're year three, and so that hurts us there. So it's hard to show the property and make it totally marketable when there's still work to be done. And this is one of the things I think that'll get us, you know, there and it's a little bit easier to say, yes, there's water and sewer here, electrical's right here, Duke Energy will tailor it to your needs, Dominion will put the gas in there. So what we asked for help with, from McGill through this time when we were getting ready for Project Catamount, Project R6 and the other projects that we had looking at that, we had to come up with what's the cost estimates to put, you know, the water and sewer in, in there. And so those estimates range between $232,000 up to $250,000 to, to put the water and sewer in there and hire ex-contractor to do that. So Jason Burrell, the town manager, and I were talking about this problem and this issue and he says, hey, we've got a little downtime. Says, we'll put, we'll extend water and sewer up there if you'll just pay for the materials. And I said, that's a dang good idea. So we went back, got our estimates redone. And so we, the county, on the county side, we have about $110,000. That includes the, the materials, the piping, the engineering, the That includes the materials, the piping, the engineering, the DEQ permits. Got, you know, put another level of bureaucracy in, since we're extending water and sewer on the behalf of two government entities, we have to get DEQ involved. We have to, and we, this is going to be surveyed out to where water and sewer's in there. That way, you know, the electrical folks know where to put their lines when it comes time, and the Dominion folks know where to put their lines when it comes time. So we'll have all that surveyed out, flagged out, and so we'll pre-flag it, where Town of Canton will know where to lay everything out, and then we'll come back and survey it, and then we'll have as-built drawings when we get done. So this is, up on the screen is the 10-acre pad there. This is part of the utility plan, you see? And then this is the final of the water and sewer there. Again, the sewer's all the way right below, at the end of the green line where the Plus Airmark Building is. We've exchanged, we changed the water to, we'll save ourselves some money. Richard Hodge went out there, reworked the plan, found us a better place to connect water there, so that saved, we were about $125,000 then. And what Richard did, would go back and reworked it, the plan, we're able to reduce our costs down to about $110,000. So that's it in a nutshell. You know, good partnership to have. We, you know, we were talking earlier about, with the Town of Claude, you know, the county enjoys a partnership like this with all of our incorporated townships, and that's nice to have. One of the things that the Asheville-Bunkham and the state folks have shared with us about how many towns and counties don't get along in situations. So it's nice that we enjoy these relationships, and I'm really happy to be a part of some of these as well, too. Any questions?
Do we have somebody looking at it right now? Somebody that's contingent for us to get water and sewer out there?
Our sixes continue to look at it. We're down, we're one of three sites for Project R6. It's over 200 jobs. We just reworked a building plan for them, just to show what size building we could actually fit on that pad.
Dave, you know right off the top of your head how many feet that extension's going to be?
Yes. Which one, sir? On water and sewer?
Yeah.
On both of them? Let's see. On water, 460 feet. On sewer, 1,025 feet. The sewer's got several manholes in it as well. Seven manholes is required. And then we also have a little bit of asphalt repair, because we've got to go across the parking lot at Plus to fix the line, to fix their parking lot.
This is an extremely competitive process drawing these businesses here, and I was out here personally with a company at one point in time and speaking with them about the, about the property, and this was, is in, was an issue, and it has been an issue the entire time. And, and the other part of that issue was the expense. And so by the town offering the employees to put this in and us just pay the cost, I mean, it's hard to pass it up, because otherwise, you've got to get a company that's willing to come here and say, okay, well, I'll install this, is what we tried to negotiate, I believe, in the past, and it's been more difficult. So I think it's going to be a lot easier to say, the utilities are here and they're right to the, to the actual property, and you don't have to worry about moving those. And we do have a site that's vacant right now, and it'd be nice to put something on it.
And one of the other things that we lost as well, from Project A to Project B, was that Department of Transportation was helping us as well, too. They have a, the ability for economic development to go in there and to put in, extend a road. So they were going to extend the road from Great Oak Drive all the way up to the end that you see there. And so due to the financial hardships that DOT is having, we were not allowed to offer part of that incentive, you know, for Project R6. That was off the table due to, you know, that they didn't have any more funds to help out with that. So we're going to have to, you know, if we're doing this, then we're going to go back and ask another grant funder if they will fill in for the Department of Transportation and take away that. For y'all who've been out there, it's just a gravel drive from the edge of Great Oak Drive up to the site. We have a fully detailed road for DOT acceptance in there, how that was to be built with cross-sections. We were going through all of that minutia and doing that, because the deal is, we provide all the engineering, do all the legwork, they approve it, and then they'll come in there. I don't know if they contracted out or how they pave it, but that's, but they were going to take care of that for us, but they took that off the table in this past April. So now we're roughly, let's see here, $180,000 is what it costs to put the driveway in, DOT specs. So we want to go to another funder and ask for help on that.
I mean, the cost of doing this, as Kirk mentioned, it's a small price to pay for the potential revenue that we could get off this property along with the jobs that could be supplied, so it is a really, a small price to pay, so.
Anybody have any other questions?
Have we, when will we know about the sales tax? I know we were holding off on raises and different things for county employees until we could get a better picture of what it was going to look like. How long before we know that?
Sales tax is coming in much higher than we have thought. June was the highest sales tax number on record, I believe. And, and, you know, when I was talking to you during the budget, I was looking at reductions of 25% for April, May, and June, and we're ahead of that. So it's promising. On the sales tax side, we just sent out property tax notices last week, and that's the majority of our general fund revenue, so we're keeping an eye on it. But by and large, the economy here in Haywood is ahead of where we thought, so the $110,000 out of fund balance for this project is a big ask, but also, that site is set in its current state for 12 years. We need to really get those utilities up there so we can shorten the time to market. That's what we're talking about, is as somebody comes in, they want to make sure that they can get up and running, and that's what we're doing.
So have we done anything with the money from selling the hospital to make the apartments? Has that been appropriated for anything, or is that just going to go into the fund balance?
We haven't closed yet, but in discussions back in late winter, we had talked about using those funds to partner with mountain projects or someone as far as a housing project. But, you know, those are general fund revenues at your all's discretion to use how you want.
Yeah, I think we were wanting to use that for affordable housing. I think mountain projects is kind of, well, not mountain projects, but Smoky Mountain, Housing Coalition would like to, it's a good partnership with that. It's kind of rolling, rolling affordable housing into that, so. So, yeah. This will come out of the general fund, Julie? Anybody have any other questions?
Is it going to mess up anything if we held off till the next meeting? If we postponed it, would it mess up anything if we held off till the next meeting and had a little more time to think about it?
This Town of Canton, it's there, it's on their agenda for Thursday, and they were going to try to start working on it next week.
Yeah, this is the best time of year to be doing something like this. The fall is the best time. I don't really want to put this off, because anytime you're doing construction, anytime, fall is the best time.
Mr. Bless, they had some downtime that they were going to use in the month of September. But for project-wise, it was not going to, but I don't know, can't speak for the Town of Canton, this is what they had slotted in was the, this time.
Anybody have any other questions? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion that we approve item two of the consent agenda. Can I word it that way, Tracy?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
You want to oppose?
No.
Okay, that's four to one. Okay, we'll move on to request the following, request approval of the following budget amendments. We have Julie, our finance director. The first one is from the general fund, safety EMS, $3,291 to appropriate fund balance to cover the cost of the tax tag entitled for the ambulance that was ordered in the last fiscal year but was not received until after June 30th, 2020.
And you'll remember probably that there were some insurance proceeds that came in last fiscal year to cover an ambulance, and when we, when we moved the ambulance money into fiscal year 21, we did not move the tax and title, so this is kind of a cleanup to move that tax and title. It's $3,291.
Is anybody having questions for that?
You want me to move on and say all three before you take any, any action?
Can we vote on all three at the same time? Okay. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion that we approve $3,291 to appropriate fund balance to cover the cost of tag, tax, and title for the ambulance that was ordered in the last fiscal year but was not received until after June 30th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
If you want to oppose. Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, B is to, from the general fund, you just wanted to talk.
Yeah, I'll go ahead, and I'll just, just to be quick. This is $5,850 that, again, for some equipment, some software that was not received by June 30th, that we had to carry over into fiscal year 21, and this is for the grant, this data processing software. It's coming out of fund balance because it's, that's where the money ended up at the end of June.
Okay. Do you have any questions on that? It's just kind of a rollover. So I'll entertain a motion that we approve three B of the regular agenda, as it's written in the, in your agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
If you want to oppose. And then C is from the general fund to accept and appropriate $10.8 million from the Haywood Health Authority to be transferred to the Haywood Healthcare Foundation for the purpose of addressing current and future, future health priorities for Haywood County citizens. And I've been looking forward for this for a...
Long time, for six years.
Long time.
We've been looking forward to this one, and you'll remember, six years ago, when the Haywood County Hospital was sold to Duke Life Point, we had to set money aside in escrow for six years to make sure all the liabilities were taken care of, and the six years is up now, and there's little more than 10.8 million that's there in escrow to transfer to the county, for the county to transfer to the Haywood Healthcare Foundation. And they're keeping a little bit of money with the health, the Haywood Health Authority to close, dissolve the authority. So once that's done, then I presume we'll receive the rest of the money. We do have a, the board chair for the Haywood Healthcare Foundation, as well as our, Jim Holmes, our investment broker with Haywood Healthcare Foundation. He's the one that invests the money, and you realize by now, I'm sure, that the county has very little opportunity to make money on our money. We are very restricted. The non-profits are not as restricted, so we have someone who is, who's being a little proactive in helping to make money on that money in there so that we can supply grants to Haywood County.
Okay, and then, of course, this was from the sale of the hospital, and Kirk, I know Kirk worked on this a lot, and I think the sale to Duke Life Point has not only given us a great hospital system, but also left us with, I think it's around 20 million?
It will be. We have a little over 11 million right now because of the investing of the original eight million, and then we're going to be adding this 10.8 million today.
Okay, so, so basically, what we do is the interest off, that we earn from their investments, the county makes grants to improve and help the healthcare for our citizens in the county. This is a great, this is a great idea from our prior boards, I guess, to do this, and Kirk, did you want to say anything?
I think Julie said it well. I mean, we've been on the Haywood Health Authority for the last six years, waiting for these liabilities to clear. At the beginning of the time, the Haywood Health Authority had the, you know, we had to meet more on a regular basis to discuss those liabilities and winding up the hospital, and now that has taken place. And as a matter of fact, the reason there's that much money is because of the settlement we had on our self-report on our, with the government, was, we did really well on that. And so saved the county a lot of money. We had a good attorney, not me, representing us in that matter and resolved that. And so now, as promised, when we initially, initially set it up, the Haywood Healthcare Foundation was going to take these funds, I don't know if you recall, but we did interviews with groups to determine who would have, have this money and invest this money, and what this money would be used for, and that's for the healthcare and better health for people in Haywood County. And so now, we met, we've got one more time to meet, I believe, with the authority to actually close it down, and then the, any, any leftover responsibilities of the Haywood Health Authority will then become the Haywood County Commissioner's responsibility at that point in time, but there shouldn't really be anything left over. But this will assure that the money from the sale of the hospital will keep benefiting people in Haywood County from, for now and a long period of time in the future, I hope.
And the hospital, the Haywood County Hospital was basically, I think, paid for from, by Haywood County citizens.
Yeah.
In the 70s, when they built the hospital. So, so this, this is kind of a gift that's going to be able to keep, keep on giving, if you will, and just improve our, our health, the health for our citizens. You know, part of this, I think, the Haywood Health, Health Foundation is doing the building for the nursing facility at the community college. They'll be paying the, so the taxpayers aren't having to foot that bill. This is being paid from a portion of those proceeds from the investments, from this money.
Exactly, and I believe that since the Commissioners created the hospital authority, I think that at the next meeting or so, there'll be some kind of resolution to dissolve the authority.
Right, okay. Anthony, did you, did you, did y'all want to say anything? I know y'all been here a long time. Didn't want to cut you out.
It's fun times.
Yeah.
Our intention is that at the end of paying for the Haywood portion at the college, that we would still have the funds with the investments. So our, our idea is that we will continue to grow the fund and still be able to provide services to the county people in the community without actually touching any of the principles, so we still have all of the money for them. I know that Jim is here. We, the last funds that you gave us was about $8 million, is that correct? And we currently have it up to almost $11 million while still providing grants to the community.
Very great.
Thank you, just to say briefly that I continue to be very excited to work to help grow this money. I work with Wells Fargo Advisors in Winston-Salem, but I am proud to be a 23-year homeowner in Haywood County as well. So we spend a lot of time up here, and every day I'm up here, I don't fight it to come up to a meeting. We have done well, I think, so far this year, even with the pullback the last two or three days, we are up about 6% this year on the money that we have invested. And we're really excited to get this additional $10.8 million at this particular time, because we want to continue to grow it and have that money available to build the, help build the nursing facility at Haywood Community College, and also to meet the health needs of the citizens of Haywood County. So I don't look at this as just another account to manage, it's a real stewardship for me, and it's an honor and a privilege to work with it.
I appreciate you feel that way. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for those comments. It's reassuring to hear that, that money is, is being well taken care of and put to good use for the county residents. good use for the county residents. I know, I don't want to labor the point, but I know my grandfather was right on the first hospital board that originally started Haywood County Hospital, it was first privately, or county-run hospital in the state of North Carolina. And I'm glad that this chapter of the book is not closed technically, because that money is still going to be put to good use for our, our county residents. The work that was begun nearly 100 years ago is still going to be carrying on, so that is comforting to hear.
I guess that's, that was your presentation, right, Julie? That was your presentation?
Yes, I'm finished, if you're ready to have this accepted.
Okay. All right, so I'll entertain a motion that we approve to accept and appropriate $10.8 million from the Haywood Health Authority to be transferred to the Haywood Healthcare Foundation for the purpose of addressing current and future, future health priorities for Haywood County citizens.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicating a saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Okay. The fourth item of the regular agenda is to request approval of the appointment of Candace Way as deputy clerk to the board. And Bryant, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When Candy retired and Tracy became the clerk, we never took the step to take a deputy clerk, and last week Candy did fill in. But if she were needed to fill in during the meeting, we would need the board to officially make her deputy clerk. So that's just this item.
I appreciate Candy willing to do that. Okay, so can, can we have a motion to request the appointment of Candace Way as deputy clerk to the board?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicating a saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, next is, our next order of business is appointments, and we have our county manager, Bryant Morehead, to request the approval of the following appointments to the Tourism Development Authority Board. Go ahead, Bryant.
We have two appointments to fill out terms of, in Waynesville, with Amy Owens leaving. The town alderman have appointed Mr. Fichter to fill out her term, and that runs through the end of this year, December 31st, 2020. And Mr. Hookby is leaving Lake Junealuska and, or retiring, and Mike Huber has been nominated to fill his term, and that expires December 31st of 2022.
Is anybody having questions about that? Okay, I'll entertain a motion that we approve John Fichter to serve the remaining term of Amy Owens. Do I need to do that individually? Okay. And Mike Huber to serve the remaining term of Rob, Rob Hookby.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor indicating a saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, our next order of business is our closed session, personnel, 143, 318, 11A6. I'll entertain a motion, we go into closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor indicating a saying aye?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, we'll be in closed session when we enter the chambers in the back. Okay, we're back to open session after our closed session. Is any, is there any other business before the board? Here and then, I'll entertain a motion, will you adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you, all be safe out there.